Good to see you. It's been a while.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Bonnet. Bonnet.
That would be kind of an interesting concept. For future. Why don't you have the one like permanent. Like always. I'd like to get over it and then you also have. Maybe kind of maybe you should.
Oh, yeah. I don't know what this is.
About. I read it.
Before we start our meeting, I wanted to share a few thoughts. Today is a solemn day as we reflect on the 24th anniversary of nine 11. And think about all of the people who died because there were some who hated our way of life, our free society. Yesterday, a 16 year old student at a high school in Evergreen, Colorado shot two students and then himself. Law enforcement says the shooter was radicalized by an extremist group. We also had the political assassination of Charlie Kirk, a man who devoted his life to the free expression of ideas. When I was nine years old, Dr. Martin Luther Kill King was killed by a white supremacist who did not like what he had to say. When I was 19 years old, Harvey Milk, the creator of the gay pride flag, was assassinated by Dan White, who was angry about being replaced on the Board of Supervisors. I suspect Charlie Kirk was murdered because of his expressions of free speech and dialogue. Not only did he actively dialogue with people who did not agree with him, he treated them with respect and openly talked about his faith in Jesus Christ, the sanctity of human life and his love for our country. Charlie Kirk once said, "Don't lose your humanity by calling the other side evil." There have been many, including me, who mourn the loss of this man. There have been others who have mocked and celebrated his death. We live in a world where tolerance only applies if you agree with them. We can disagree with someone's view without celebrating their pain. You can debate, argue, walk away, but to laugh over violence? That's not love, that's hypocrisy. And if we can't see that, what message are we sending to our children? May God bless and heal America. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 11th, 2025 Board of Education Regular Meeting. The time is 6:34 and I am calling this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
D'Avola.
Here.
Hyo.
Here.
Laveri Wright.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
D'Avola.
Aye.
Hyo.
Aye.
Laveri Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. We welcome comments from stakeholders during D49's open forum. Please stay seated until your name is called by the Board of Education Chair, then approach the podium to introduce yourself. Speak clearly into the microphone and keep your remarks respectful and orderly. Personal complaints against individuals connected with the district, except for board members or the superintendent, are prohibited. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. The board will not respond during the forum, but may assign follow up action to the superintendent. We also encourage you to use the stakeholder grievance process for resolving concerns, which may culminate in a formal appeal to the board. Thank you for participating. The views expressed in the forum are those of the commentators and do not reflect official policy of District 49 or the Board of Education. Mistia, okay. Okay, if the following people could come up into the area we have set over here. And first up, we have Jacqueline. Adair. I also need Mistia Fallon and Lindsay Lee.
My name is Jacqueline Adair. I'm a graduate of District 49 of 2008. I grew up in Colorado Springs. This is my home. In the recent months, a stranger has asked me if we had these problems 20 years ago. I was 16 years old 20 years ago, and no, we didn't, because children didn't transition, at least not here. In third grade, I was a tomboy. I often played with the boys. I didn't know it, but these boys were popular and I became the hated girl of a group of girls that I didn't even know existed. In sixth grade, we did a field trip to a scuba diving pool. I was in the last group to get a turn. When we got to the locker room to change, I found all of my clothes removed from my bag, scattered and soaking wet. When I had to change into them and walk out knowing what I what was to come, I was lucky to have just one teacher stand up for me against a crowd of sixth grade kids staring and laughing. My mom never knew this happened. In eighth grade, one of my closest friends started to ignore me, so I wrote her a letter, then it then it rumored around that I was a lesbian. Kids can be mean. I don't believe they are raised to be, but they are inherently mean sometimes. All just to fit in somewhere. Last year, my daughter was in fourth grade, where some of the boys were inviting her to the Diddy party. This year, in fifth grade, boys are yelling "6'9"! You all know what that refers to. These were not things we were saying as fourth and fifth grade students 20 years ago. I don't believe children or teenagers should transition, but it is not my place to tell others how they should raise their kids, just as others don't get the right to call us child abusers for doing it differently. District 49 leaders have come to make another hard choice. I admit I don't know the right answer here. However, I believe a safe private bathroom for transitioning students is a good, safe idea. If it were up to me, people wouldn't transition until adulthood.
Mistia.
Hello, my name is Mistia Fallon. I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to the board for drafting the policy JBAA, which simply adds restrooms to the protected spaces for biological females and males. This is not a trans issue, it is a safety and equality issue. Last month, my daughter was displaced from her restroom when a biological adult male was utilizing the facilities, the girls restroom. Prior to entering the girls restroom, this biological male, unshaven, wearing a skirt, was sitting with two other boys in the common area my daughter and other female students were studying in. The males were watching inappropriate material on their phone, making lewd comments amongst each other, and this specific student was literally joking, moaning sexually. My daughter does not believe this student to be genuinely trans. She believes he is seizing an opportunity to go anywhere he wants with the blessing of the principal under the trans umbrella. This belief makes my daughter and her 14 year old friend additionally uncomfortable sharing the restroom with this adult biological male, which reminded me of the Luden County. Luden County came to mind. When I asked the principal about the policy, I was told that if my daughter was uncomfortable with sharing the girls restroom with an adult male, she could utilize a single stall gender neutral restroom. And went on to list a series of trans tolerance policies, I believe in an effort to redirect the focus to one of mine and my daughter's intolerance for trans people. But this fell flat because I used to work for HRC and I used to work for AIDS Project LA and I own a circus school and I service a large community of LGBT artists and I have several on my staff and I'm a big advocate for LGBT community and an even bigger advocate for fairness and safety in the schools. Although we appreciate the policy, we believe it was drafted with the intention of nullifying itself. I'm referring to the bullet point that states if a student or parent guardian requests an alternative via written request to the principal, the school shall provide access to a single user facility or other reasonable option without requiring disclosure of personal information beyond the request. We would simply like the sentence to end at the word "facility." Otherwise, who decides what is reasonable? This is subjective, undefined, and unclear. This is not a trans issue, this is a safety issue. Thank you.
Lindsay Lee. Lindsay, before you start, I'm going to call other people up to those seats. Holly Bumbria. Mary and Schnmucker. Bear with me if I'm reading it wrong, it's her handwriting. Kristy Davis. Judy Vasquez. And by the way, I have to say, she really is wonderful. She's sorting things in a hurry, so. Okay.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lindsay Lee. I am a member of the Horizon SAC, a member of the Sand Creek SAC. Sorry, my kids switch schools and so I have to, or advanced schools, so I have to remember that. Member of the DAC and Vice President of Neighbors for Education. I have a lot of thoughts on this proposed policy JBAA tonight that many other folks here are going to articulate probably better than I. But one of the things that really stood out to me in the cover letter actually of this policy is that the claim is that this policy is justified by recent data and assessments and yet that data and assessment information has not been made available to the public. So I would like to request that the board ask Lynette to make those, that data available to the public so that in advance of this board voting on a very serious policy proposal, that we can have a solid understanding of the justification for what seems to be an allegation that the community is supportive or requesting this policy. Because without that data, we don't know that to be true. Secondly, Director D'Avola, it's been 15 weeks and one day since I gave you the opportunity to apologize for calling myself and parents like me a child abuser and I'm going to give you another opportunity tonight because we've been waiting for 15 weeks and one day. Thanks.
Holly.
Hello, Board. I'm Holly Bumbria. I'm a D49 homeowner and the mom of three 49, D49 graduates. After yesterday's public and school murders and today being nine 11, we are all rattled. We need to respect all of God's children. We need to love one another. Does D49 still value all people? Does that include protected classes as defined by Colorado law? Does the D49 Board of Directors still abide by the laws of Colorado? We talk about gender identity and gender expression being protected classes, but do we really know the actual law? Colorado Revised Statute 2434-601 contains discrimination in places of public accommodation and goes on to state that a place of public accommodation includes educational institutions. It goes on to state that it is unlawful to refuse or deny to an individual, based on a list of classes that includes gender identity and gender expression, an equal enjoyment of various places, including facilities. Facilities, I interpret that to include restroom facilities. When my kids were little, they had a book called Everybody Poops. Everyone should have a safe place to use the restroom. I've had trans friends since the early 80s. Some of my trans friends have told me that they don't ever use public restrooms because they don't feel safe. All D49 people should feel safe using a restroom and this is protected by law. Please vote no on JBAA, you know the one. And when you discuss item 9.6, provide gender neutral restrooms so that everybody truly can feel safe in the D49 restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia.
Hello, my name is Marceline Schmucker and I am a former student of D49. I spent all 12 years of grade school in Falcon Elementary, Middle, and High School. Three and a half of those years were spent, of those high school years were spent in Air Force JROTC and the rest in a weird gray area between Air Force and Space Force JROTC before graduating in 2022. I didn't realize that I was transgender until after graduating and I am very lucky to have not realized sooner. I felt in a need to present femininely my entire life, but before high school, I suppressed that. And in high school, I was required to follow JROTC uniform standards. Of course, I have heard rumors about how bad bullying in Falcon could be, but I was lucky enough to be ignored. Had I realized that I was trans while still in school though, there is no question that I would have faced bullying due to how I now look and sound. I already struggled in school with anxiety and depression, to the point where I planned and nearly executed my own suicide. Piling onto that would have been catastrophic for me, but I would have most likely been fine. Thanks to the fact that my mental health has been generally better after transitioning and thanks to the fact that policy JBAA was not in existence while I was in school. I could have gone to the women's restroom to avoid one of the worst bullying hotspots in any public school, the men's restroom. This policy will set the precedent that bullying trans people is okay. This policy would have removed that safe haven and ended my life. As a side note, I'm hoping that there are some trans men here to speak, but on the off chance that there are not, I would like to remind the board that minors can access gender affirming hormone therapy in Colorado, which for trans men includes testosterone, which causes things like muscle and facial hair growth. This policy would force these men and boys to use the women's restroom just because of a word on their birth certificate. Please vote no on policy JBAA.
Thank you. Kristy Davis.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Davis and I am the Chapter Chair of Moms for Liberty in El Paso County. I would like to encourage this board to vote for the newly proposed policy JBAA. There is one section within the policy that I would like to see strengthened. The section reads, "If a student or parent guardian requests an alternative via a written request to the principal, the school shall provide access to a single user facility or other reasonable option without requiring disclosure of personal information beyond the request itself." I would like to see the "or other reasonable option" section removed or revised as it is open to interpretation of the reader of what reasonable option may be and could actually nullify the entire policy. Policy JBAA is necessary. There's a situation came up recently in one of D49 schools that affected the daughter of one of our members. Her rights were violated when a biological male was using a women's restroom and she was told to find an alternative option if she felt unsafe in her designated private space. The student had facial hair and wore a dress or skirt to school and would sit with the male students in a common space surrounded by other students and make lewd jokes and sexual moaning noises, then proceed to get up and use the women's restroom. This made the female student feel very uncomfortable and unsafe sharing a private space with this individual. She bravely told her parents about the situation. The school leaders were unwilling to act in a manner that protected this young woman's rights, protected under Title IX, which states, "No person on the basis of sex shall be excluded from participation and be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving financial assistance." She was denied the benefit of a sex segregated space. Moms for Liberty El Paso County is proud of this young woman and her parents as they bravely navigated this situation. The respect they showed for the other student, the staff, and the district while still providing their child's legal rights to use the facility that aligned with her biological sex was commendable. We encourage the D49 Board to please make the modifications suggested and pass this policy once amended. We encourage you to do so to avoid situations like the one mentioned above. We would like to see positive outcomes for all students' safety and dignity while staying within the protections granted based on biological sex through Title IX. I would also like to thank this board for your recent and brave actions to preserve the fairness and safety in sports with policy JBA in your lawsuit against Chassa. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Judy Vasquez. And Judy, while you're coming up, if we could get Devon Shetron, Sarah Dugert, Jeff Hall, and Vixery, if you could line up over there.
Good evening. My name is Judy Vasquez. I was a former board member for two terms on the Falcon School District School Board. I have five children that graduated from Falcon School District and I have three grandchildren that recently graduated from Falcon School District. I'm from a very small town south of here, Trinidad, Colorado. The sex change capital of the world. I was born and raised in Trinidad. Knew many that went through sex changes in Trinidad and knew personally the doctor that did it, Dr. Byber. Never would he have ever even fathomed to do it on a child, an adult, many, many. They were very nice people. They were. We weren't mean to them. We never had a problem in Trinidad. We didn't. But I believe that this that you are bringing forward is a good idea. It's not about, it's about safety. It's about safety for our children. They are children. They are not adults. We are here to protect children. And that is what we need to do. And I think it's, it's great that you as a school board are coming forward with us and I fully support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon.
Hi, if you guys could just give me one second. Okay. So my name is Devon Shetron. I am a transgender woman and a college student. After reading the proposed document, I could say with confidence that this is meant to discriminate in her all, discriminate against in her all D49 students. Banning transgender students from facilities matching their gender identity violates state law and will face legal challenges. While there are no trans athletes in D49 to challenge that illegal policy, transgender students use the restrooms in D49 daily. This policy will harm them, especially disabled trans students, likely violating the ADA unless every floor has ADA compliant restrooms for disabled trans students. If elevators go out, how are those kids supposed to use the restroom? Okay. This attack on transgender students mirrors the stigma faced by AIDS patients in the 1980s, driven by hate, disinformation, and othering. It wrongly paints trans students as a threat to, or a threat to safety, harming not only them, but cis students who as a threat to safety, harming not only them but cis students who may be misidentified. This will only increase harassment for all D-49 students fueled by the fear and prejudice of some school board members targeting vulnerable groups of kids. Imagine being an adult who chooses to bully children, already at a higher risk of bullying, suicide, and depression. Why are there board members like Jamie Lynn D'Vola that are sending their kids to private schools and charter schools instead of sending them to D-49 schools? It shows that there's no real connection to the schools for them. What benefit does that have for them? Like, you're not sending your kids to these schools. You don't care. It doesn't impact you. I'd like to ask the Board why some members are working with non-political hate organizations like Moms for Liberty. Are you financially benefiting from or receiving other incentives by pushing anti-transgender policies and voting against trans students' rights for these organizations? I believe there should be a government audit to investigate board members to see if they're profiting from these connections, like Dee Schneider from Twisted Sister saying, "We're not going to take it. No, we ain't going to take it. We're not going to take it anymore. We've got the right to choose it. There ain't no way we'll lose it. This is our life. This is our song." We will use our voices to call out this hate.
Thank you. Sarah?
Hello. I want to begin by thanking you for your commitment and service to this district. The time and effort you give is greatly appreciated. That said, I want to bring to your attention a serious concern. By allowing biological males to use female restrooms, this district is currently in direct violation of Title IX federal law. Title IX guarantees female students equal access to safe and private facilities. Permitting biological males into female designated spaces infringes upon those rights and places the district in legal jeopardy. In addition, the proposed policy language stating that "The school shall provide access to a single-use facility or other reasonable option" is vague and problematic. The phrase "other reasonable option" lacks specificity and leaves the door open for subjective interpretation that could still allow biological males into female spaces. I strongly urge this Board to revise the policy with precise wording to ensure female students' rights are not compromised. This is not an issue that can be delayed. Federal compliance and student safety must be upheld without ambiguity. As our state is already under increased scrutiny for Title IX violations from the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice, it would serve in the Board's best interest to act swiftly and correct this matter. Thank you for your attention and for your service.
Thank you. Jeff?
Board, Jeff Hall. So, first of all, congratulations on writing this, and not so many congratulations on waffling on it. Your first page, the way it's written up, is a definite no that boys will not be in girls' bathrooms and girls will not be in boys' bathrooms. Great. One bullet is a definite maybe, and that's where it says other characteristics. On the second page, the bullets under accommodations for privacy is a definite maybe. So, you don't get to choose both. It's either yes or no. There's no middle ground there. You either are a boy or a girl. You go to the boys' restroom, or you go to the girls' restroom. There's nothing in between. End of story. There's no room for ambiguity. What you need to do is tell the truth. That's all there is to it. Biological boys need to be in boys' rooms. Biological girls need to be in girls' rooms. End of story. It's never a good idea to lie to a kid or mislead them to believe that they can be happy in a life being chemically or surgically altered. It's also completely obvious that mutilating kids to achieve a perverse ideology, it's not a kid problem. It's an adult problem. Kids are being misled to believe that their life will be great, that they'll have a great sex life, that they can reproduce. They can't. If you support anything other than biological males and biological females, you're lying to the kids. Thank you.
Okay, well, Vixery is coming up. Could I have, and I'm going to pronounce this name wrong, Crosey, Julie Dillon, and John Graham. If you could come up to the seats behind.
You ready? Okay, Vixery?
My name is Vixery Aratum. I'm a trans woman. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. I live in Colorado Springs, and my partner is a former student of D-49. Being trans is a trauma. We grow up being told to perform in a body that doesn't fit, abused when we dare to explore, and now our identities are being erased. Over the past few years, state lawmakers introduced at least 987 bills targeting roughly 1% of the population. Teachers are paid slave wages. Education is failing our kids. And yet, institutions dedicate funding and time to frame us as criminal-philiacs instead of normal people who find happiness and freedom expressing themselves as ourself. According to WebMD, LGBTQ+ people, especially those who face bullying, have much higher rates of suicide, depression, and anxiety, substance abuse, homelessness, violence, disease, and obesity. Forcing a visible woman into a men's locker room because she has a penis is not protecting the kids. It's bullying a very vulnerable group of people when you could, I don't know, invest in stalls? For those who are actually listening, Joan of Arc was transmasculine. He was burnt at the stake by the Catholic Church for dressing in men's clothing. Trans people have always existed. We will always exist. Be yourself and do so proudly. Spit in the face of those that threaten you. Defy laws and policies when they exist to kill you. Vote no on JBAA or risk pushing kids to suicide. Thank you for your time.
And I guess it's Katie Masser.
Let me paint you a picture. Imagine being a mother of a 14-year-old child with the mind of a seven-year-old. Every morning, you put her on the bus and pray. Pray that she's safe and pray that her innocence will be protected, that no one will take advantage of her vulnerability. She processes the world more slowly, making quick decisions nearly impossible. She depends on the adults around her to keep her safe. I am that mother. I am the mother of a child with a disability, a child who deserves to be protected. As a survivor of domestic violence myself, I stand here today pleading for you to take a walk in my shoes. Now imagine learning that her school, the very place designed to protect her, is instead exposing her to danger, that men, not boys, men, are allowed in the private spaces where she is most vulnerable, spaces where harm can go unnoticed and innocence can be taken away in an instant. As a parent, I have the sacred duty to protect my child, but you, as leaders of this district, have the duty as well to put safeguards in place for those who cannot protect themselves. How can parents be expected to trust their children's to the care if we know that their safety is compromised? Let me be absolutely clear. Girls don't belong in boys' restrooms. Boys don't belong in girls' restrooms, period. The policy offers gender-neutral bathrooms, and that's where they should be. Our children deserve safety. They deserve protection, and we, as parents, are asking you to act that the policy be written clear, precise, in protecting our most vulnerable. This is not a trans issue. This is a safety issue. I ask you to use your position to protect my daughter and those like her.
Thank you. Julie Dillon?
Hello, my name is Julie Dillon. I graduated from Sand Creek High School a million years ago, feels like. Anyways, I do think that females and males should have their own bathrooms. If you're not fully transitioned, meaning that you're still the anatomy of a boy, then you should use the men's, and same goes for women that are fully not transitioned. There should be a unisex bathroom for transgender individuals. I believe it is for the safety and comfort of all students. Because why? Kids are just curious. They're mean, and let's be honest, middle school was weird for all of us. Even as an adult or young adult, this situation is uncomfortable, and I will use my nephew's experience as an example. Even as a 17-year-old male, he was in his workplace, and he was using a urinal as a male would do. A woman walked into the bathroom. She was not transitioned. She had full breasts, and she walked in, and he got very uncomfortable. He made a strange face. He felt weird, and so he ended up getting sent to HR for making her feel uncomfortable for being in the wrong bathroom. And then he then told HR, "Well, what about my uncomfort? I was very uncomfortable." And I don't think that is fair. I do think it is fair that they have a place that is safe for everyone. And I was just recently in North Middle School for their 100th anniversary, and I think the way they have their bathrooms designed is separate stalls. Their hand-washing sinks are completely outside, one person in each stall. Anyone could use them. It's open to all, everybody. It might cost money, but it might be a great design. Otherwise, men should be in men bathrooms and females in female bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. John Graham?
John Graham, former Board President of District 49, business owner, father of five. I know everyone on this Board. I know these guys. I know most of these guys. I know actually most of the people in the audience, three of which I've served with, and we have all disagreed more than once. Whether you're in the audience, whether you're the two over here that I didn't serve with, that hated me at various times, you guys have all disagreed with me. You two have yelled at me. Well, maybe not Peter, but he didn't like me a few times. But we agreed to disagree. And we're at a point here where we have to recognize we can agree to disagree. We don't need to resort to violence. Children, and I mean all children, whatever color you are, whatever race you are, whatever religion you are, whatever you identify as, all deserve safety, respect, and love. I say, protect all kids. I also say, coming from a family that has a transgender kid, not only with my nieces and nephews, but in my immediate family, one of the kids I raised, we all have a right to identify as ourselves. We all have a right to love another, and we all have a right to be loved and associate with others. We all are deserving of the respect bestowed upon us as created human beings. But respect works both ways. Biological girls and women have a right to privacy, as do biological boys. I'll say it again. Respect works both ways. If you've got an XX chromosome, you go to the XX bathroom. If you have XY chromosome, you go to the XY bathroom. Political violence, school violence, is never the answer. It's projecting hate, and you're trying to force your will onto other people. Everyone in this room has a right to their opinion, to be safe while expressing it, and regardless of whether I agree with you or not, I will defend your right to be safe with my dying breath. And that's where the Board should approach. Keep the kids safe.
Thank you. Does anyone have an item to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Oh, Jackson.
Oh, Jackson, were you signed up? Okay, come on up. Sorry about that. We were scrambling. So, we have one more public forum, and then we'll go on to the meeting. I think that was my mistake. I can't even blame her handwriting. I missed that one as I was crossing things out.
Thank you for letting me be here to speak tonight. I had something written that I should probably still have pull up, but hearing public comments, I just, I really have to address you all in the room, because what I'm hearing is that I'm really glad that we're all on the same side of wanting to protect kids, right? Like, that is why we are here. We want to protect kids, and we want them to succeed in school, and we want them to succeed and thrive. And so, you ask why I'm here today, and maybe some people are asking why bathrooms is a trans issue, or why we're here today, or why trans folks and trans students are having a problem with this policy. And I just want to let you know that trans individuals are four to five times more likely to seriously consider and attempt suicide than their cisgender and heterosexual peers. Transgender students are four to five times more likely to commit suicide than their cisgender and heterosexual peers. I want to protect those kids, and all kids, from making that decision to end their life permanently. And the Trevor Project, and sources like Healthy Kids Colorado surveys, and countless other studies, have shown a direct correlation between bathroom discrimination and policies like this and youth suicide rates. That is not the inverse for cis students. You are not going to see an uptick in cisgender student suicides because this policy is passed. You probably will see one for trans students. I want every D-49 student to graduate happy and healthy. There is a direct correlation between this policy and death. We want to protect students. So, the choice is clear. If you want to talk about gender-neutral options, I think single stalls in the whole school are great. Inside-out, we'll have that conversation with you. There are ways to focus on safety. Also, let's talk about safety in bathrooms, sex, drugs, and fighting. That happens like every single day, and we're not banning that from anything. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think I heard any answers for items to be pulled from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve all consent agenda items as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Can I get a vote?
D'Vola?
Aye.
Hyell?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. And we are on to our superintendent update.
So, good evening, Board. Thank you to the members of the Board that have been able to attend actually a number of district events over the last couple of weeks. Since we last met here, we had our annual launch to the school year with our staff. We delayed that by a month so that we're into the year and we're not stepping on kind of the beginning week of school, pre-service, and first week activities. So, we had that on the Friday before Labor Day at Sand Creek's Gymnasium. We call that event our Peak View, and it was just a great opportunity to celebrate schools that are doing all kinds of good things. And since then, even since then, I've gotten some additional data about school performance. I was able to tell you at our work session in August that all of our schools, all of our operated schools that received a school performance framework were in the top rating of performance that the state provides. I have since now learned through a preliminary report on GOAL as an alternative education campus, or AEC, that GOAL earned 66 points on the AEC framework, putting them well in performance, which means, thank you, which means that District 49 will be well in performance. We won't know, because of the size of GOAL and the way that calculation works each year, we won't know whether our overall district performance score has stayed flat or gone up slightly or gone down slightly. It won't be a dramatic move in any direction, and knowing that GOAL's in performance means the district is also in performance, which is a great achievement. And so, we are absolutely proceeding in the direction of being a district of distinction. Last year, we had multiple schools- Last year, we had multiple schools that were in improvement, this year, we do not have any. All of our Title I schools are in the highest band of performance, without any AEC adjustment or anything else. They're just performing. And so, that's a fantastic accomplishment by those students, and the teachers, and other educators, and staff that serve them. So, just a tremendous set of things going well for our students and our schools at the same time. As part of that Peak View event, I was happy to announce to our staff what I had previously announced, and we've published to you, which is that District 49 was selected as one of only seven national finalists for the Performance Excellence Recognition of the United States. The Performance Excellence Program, called the Baldridge Program, named for Commerce Secretary under President Reagan, has been working with us to get ready for a site visit. So they will be sending some organizational experts from other industries and from education to our site, to interview people from around the district, from many functions in the district. And so, we are preparing for that site visit, preparing to put our best foot forward. But what's really exciting is that all we really have to do is show them how our students and schools are performing, show them how our operational departments are doing more with less and demonstrating efficiency. And being a national finalist already meets one of our two big hairy audacious goals, or BHAGs, and yet we still have four very important annual strategic objectives that we are working on. And so, regardless of where we stand today, or where we might stand in a month or two, we know that we've got continued good work to do, and so we're going to continue to do that, and continue to drive toward being a district of distinction. So, thank you for your support, and your involvement, and your presence at these many different issues. Like, like others have mentioned tonight, we in the school community in particular are standing with our colleagues and the students at Evergreen High School. Anytime we see, we see that kind of desperate violence, especially in a school setting, we feel that keenly. And so, I just, I wanted to speak to the board, a couple of you have asked me questions about this, wanted to remind the board and our community of our security protocols, in addition to the school resource officers that are provided with, through contracts with the Colorado Springs Police Department for our schools in the city, as well as the El Paso Sheriff's Office through our schools in the county. We also have our own armed security force director and specialist, many of whom are former law enforcement, or former military, or sometimes both. And those individuals meet the same peace officer safety training standards, the post standards. So, they are, they are well-equipped to partner with local law enforcement, or to act independently as need may arise. We, we provide armed security to all of our schools. We have, we have folks that are assigned either permanently to single schools, or roving through our elementary schools. All of our schools are covered. All of our schools have secure and safe entries, double vestibule entries, with buzz-in systems. And in addition to our SROs, our Armed Security Director and Specialist, our roving armed patrol officers, we also have unarmed security that provide eyes and presence around our facilities. And so, our strategy in District 49 is a combination of expert-trained people, and secure facilities with systems like our Raptor check-in system, our camera system, our ability to follow standard response protocols that guide our teachers, educators, other staff, students, and guests, so that they know how to respond depending on the kind of an incident. We have relatively recent history of doing what we need to do in a critical situation. We have not had the kind of school violence that we've seen recently, but we've had wildland fires, we've had dangerous conditions around a building, police activity near a building, and our teams have performed incredibly well, followed the training and followed the protocols. So I just, I want to reinforce for the board, and reinforce for our community, that the safety of our students, staff, and guests is a daily priority. It is absolutely imperative that we continue to keep it a priority. We have not become complacent, and we will not become complacent. And if there are some further questions, maybe at a later point in the meeting, I'm happy to answer those. But I think we have good reason to believe that we are doing the right things the right way, we have the right people on the team, and in District 49, we take school safety completely seriously, and we're doing all that we can to, to maintain its priority. So with that, I will hand over my time back to the board, but as you may have additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Angie, you want to tell us what's been going on at your school?
So, we've had a lot of issues previously with, like, safety and fighting and whatever, but our admin has tried to slow that down a little bit. I know the security guard that is currently employed at Banning did stop a situation from happening. There isn't really much other going on at Banning currently. We have homecoming, but that's pretty much it. It's just the fighting that's starting to become a problem, but I'm pretty sure admin is handling it.
And Vivian, I know you missed our last board meeting, but I think you got caught up tonight.
I did get caught up tonight. So I'm Vivian Barr, I'm a returning student board member. I served last year, I'm serving this year again. And as far as our updates go for student board, recently, we talked about a student leadership day. So, we want to have a leadership day for the student board members to meet each other. If you don't know what student board is, it's select students, three to four, from each high school in District 49, and they are chosen to represent their high schools at board meetings, monthly, where we talk about what happens here at Board of Education meetings, and we share our thoughts and opinions, and that's why we have chairs here. So that's what the student board is, and we're planning a leadership day so we can get to know each other better, and really work on cross-school communication, and really talk about what's happening at your school, oh, what's happening at my school, how can we solve that, how can we bring that to the board, how can we address that in our community. We also recently discussed the Board of Education elections. We're all very excited and thrilled to be able to be involved, even just a little bit in that process, to see how it goes down. And the board currently, I will say thank you for being so open and honest about our questions. When we ask you, hey, how does this work? How do you get elected? What are you doing to get elected? Like, it's a very, they're very open and honest about that, and we really do appreciate the honesty from them. And we're just curious about it. We recently discussed a candidate forum, but I don't think that that is fully developed yet, so next board meeting, you'll hear about that. And moving on to the big issue, which was a very big topic, as seen in the public comments, I'm going to let Angie talk about what we discussed, and the student opinion, and the student perspective on JBA, and our opinions and our thoughts on it. So, if you are intrigued in the student perspective, here's what we came up with, here's what we talked about, here's our perspective on it, as students of District 49 who are currently going through all of the changes that you all, you all mentioned today. And so, I'm going to let Angie talk about that. Thank you so much.
So, at the board meeting for the Student Board of Education, we all talked about JBA and what it would entail. Our, the students, we felt that it should be a safe place for all of us. It should be, we should be allowed to feel safe and comfortable in our own schools. And if a student is not feeling comfortable or safe in the school because they cannot use a bathroom that they identify with, we believe that we should make those accommodations for them. Yes, they are making the decision to transition, but at the same time, we don't want to cause more mental health problems that go with that, because a lot of high school students have depression, anxiety, we're worried about graduating, we're worried about being adults, and now they have to worry about that as well. We also, bullying and harassment is also a big thing with trans students. So, we believe that there should either be unisex bathrooms that are able to be used, or a single stall, because we shouldn't get rid of a girls' or a boys' bathroom, but adding that for them to be able to use, for their own safety, their own personal preference. We also said that already Liberty Tree, Pepeck, right? Pepeck, Falcon, a lot of our schools, even at Banning, we have those bathrooms. So, we can still use those and allow those students to use them, other than just the teachers. The teachers should have their own bathroom, but we also believe that the students should be allowed to use that as well.
And the, the general consensus amongst the student board was, we do believe in gender-neutral bathrooms. We believe everybody should have a space where they feel, okay, sorry, sorry, where they feel comfortable, but we do not believe that bathrooms, who are girls' or boys' bathrooms, should be changed into those bathrooms. We recognize that there is a lot of apprehension around people having their own spaces, or people sharing spaces. So we, as a student board, kind of came to the conclusion that we think that it is best that there is a third separate option. I think that we, we as a student board, we came to the conclusion, that's the safest, that's the most responsible. And like Angie said, we are, that is in practice at a lot of our schools. There are gender-neutral, or relatively neutral bathrooms that trans students do use, and it is, I know at least at Pepeck, it is not an issue, and it has never been brought up as an issue. So, there's that.
Okay, thank you for your input. Director Schmidt, do you have your update?
I do, thank you. My gloss is off here, so I can read it. Okay, so in Colorado, HB23-1057 does provide, in new and renovated public buildings, facilities for students who are uncomfortable, insect segregated bathrooms. In my opinion, though, the Colorado accommodation does not give anyone the right to compromise the privacy of the rest of the student body, most of whom-
Point of order, Director Schmidt, that's part of the discussion when we get to that item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, right now, it's just the time-
I'm reading the wrong part.
But I understand.
Okay, let me start over.
Do you have your board update?
I'm sorry. Okay. Today marks twenty-four years since the attack on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon. Cowardly assassins flew planes into those buildings, seeking nothing less than the maximum loss of life. Today, we remember and pray for all the victims of that political assassination. Fast forward to yesterday, when shortly after lunch, I saw the most disturbingly horrifying video that I have ever seen. The video graphically showed the assassination of a good man, who was one of many during my lifetime that lost their lives to an assassin's bullets. I was six when they killed JFK, and within a couple of years, they took Martin and Bobby. All of them were political assassinations. Cowards choose bullets to silence the speech of good men, because they don't like what they're saying. Instead of choosing to enter into more speech and try to find a solution, someone chose assassination. This morning, there were hundreds of people dehumanizing Mr. Kirk online, and celebrating his political assassination, claiming some kind of victory. How sad it must be, how sad you must be inside yourself to celebrate the death of another human being. But this is America, and the First Amendment says these folks have a right to say these things. Contrast that to Mr. Kirk's method, which was asking questions, setting down the mic, and listening. After listening, he would then share his thoughts and beliefs. It was the epitome of free speech. In the end, God will use this for good. Killing a leader will not kill the cause. People will stand taller, speak bolder, and hold on to God stronger. Mr. Kirk will be memorialized through action, through truth, and through an unwavering commitment to God and country.
Thank you. Director Hile?
So I attended the ribbon-cutting at the Falcon High School Auto Shop, along with my colleague here, Marie, and I got to say, our high school students having access to cutting-edge technology is really exciting. And what's really great about it is that so much of this material was donated to our schools by business partners in the area, who are just smart business leaders, who recognize that making investments in our schools will produce higher-quality employees for them. So it is win-win, and I'm really pleased to see. I attended the Peak View event that Mr. Hiltz mentioned earlier. It proved the philosopher's bowling for soup true when they said that high school never ends, especially if you're a high school teacher. There were some very raucous cheer and counter cheers going on, while the cheerleaders were looking around like, what are you doing? This is our job. But a very good time, exciting event, and I can share with you that I was the highest-scoring board member in the trivia game. Let's see. Over the next couple of weeks, I'm looking forward to a delivery from Schneider Electric on the investment-grade audit preliminary results. Cautiously optimistic that they'll have projects for us that will be able to save us on some operating costs, get us some needed building upgrades, and maybe offset some of that $135 million worth of deferred maintenance over the next five years, and not have to cost you taxpayers a single extra dime. So, you know, here's hoping. And as of this month, I will be attending the full DAC, just because of the way I've always been meeting with the Budget MLO Subcommittee, and there's been a change to how those subcommittees meet, and it's just more practical. So, I'll see some of you there. And I just want to give a plug, last call for the D-49 4.9K Fun Run. It's a good event for the whole family. It's going to take place out at Falcon High School on September 20th. Please come out. And I want to add, on a more somber note, my heart goes out to the Evergreen community. Thank you, Mr. Hiltz, for speaking to the security concerns of those of us in, in D-49. And on that note, too, I heard from community members following the assassination of Charlie Kirk, and the amplification of violent rhetoric that has followed, that there were people who wanted to come to this meeting and attend, and they did not feel safe doing so. And so, I just want to remind our whole D-49 family that cycles of violence are historically really easy to fall into, extremely difficult to end, and so please just love one another, love your neighbor as yourself. Thank you.
Director Livia Wright?
I'll give one plug quickly. For anyone, all of our teachers, remember that the Falcon Ed Foundation applications for many grants are out. They're due at the end of the month. They were sent out at the beginning of the month, so please check those out, and remember to apply. But then I'm going to rather echo some of the other comments. But first, I'm reading a list. Donald Trump, Melissa Hartman, Mark Hartman, John Hoffman, Yvette Hoffman, and Charlie Kirk. That's six names. All six of those people have been victims of political violence over the last year and a half. Every shooter in the case was a white male. The white males varied on which extreme they identified with, but they're extremes. And those extremes are reflected even in the shooting that occurred on the same day at Evergreen, because the most recent update said that that sixteen-year-old white male with short blond hair was radicalized by an extremist group. They haven't identified which end of the extreme that child was radicalized by, but that is a child who was radicalized, who took his own life after impacting the life of thousands in his school forever. Today, eight historically, extraordinarily black colleges and universities closed for terroristic threats, as did the Naval Academy. I don't think that's unrelated either. And I think, yes, freedom of speech is highly valued in this country, and when freedom of speech exists, so does the demand for responsibility and accountability. And I think every one of us needs to start holding others accountable for that speech. The fact that some people who posted touching statements of sadness about Charlie Kirk were also the same people who posted jokes about Melissa Hartman and Mark Hartman when they were assassinated in their home, and people who posted jokes about Charlie Kirk, or said he got what was coming, or posted something like, "Too bad-" "Too bad they missed," when Donald Trump, when the assassinated, was attempted assassination happened to him, posted things that were sad and compassionate about Melissa Hartman and Mark Hartman and the critically injured John Hoffman and Yvette Hoffman are part of the problem. You're contributing to the violence by not recognizing the humanity of the people who disagree with you. You contribute to that violence when you don't call out people within your own group for doing it. Our children are watching, and they're learning, and that's what contributes to a sixteen-year-old young man radicalizing. It's enough. We need to hold one another accountable to the words we use. Yep, you have every right to post it. And your friends and the people who believe in the same group, no matter what one you orient with, should hold you accountable to the words and remind you of the humanity you're stripping when you use them.
Director DiVola?
All right, just a part of my, um, my update. So I had a blast at the Power Zone Back-to-School event. That was super fun. So thank you to Teresa Ritz and the whole Power Zone team for putting that on. Got to eat tacos and a funnel cake and get powdered sugar all over. And my daughter had a, uh, a beard, a powdered sugar beard on her chin from it. She enjoyed all the activities and all the games that were a part of that, so that was a lot of fun. So today is the twenty-fourth anniversary of the attack on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon. We will never forget how this event rattled our entire nation and reminded us of what it means to be Americans. We united together as fellow Americans and chose to put our differences aside and remember what makes America great and why we were targeted. Yesterday, we once again were reminded about how important it is to have civil discourse and healthy debate without villainizing people with differing opinions. I am deeply saddened by the school shooting in Evergreen, the death of the woman on the subway, and the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk. Violence in places of learning, where debate and civil discourse should be championed and valued, is tragic and completely unacceptable. Charlie Kirk was a person who welcomed debate with all people and all perspectives, no matter who they were. He championed the First Amendment and used open dialogue to respectfully hear and debate all sides of all issues. In Charlie Kirk's own words, he said, "When people stop talking, that's when you get violence. That's when civil war happens because you start to think the other side is so evil, and they lose their humanity." I just pray to God that we do not lose, continue to lose our humanity when we're talking about things that are very important and being able to have disagreements and yet see each other as human beings and people of value and potential and promise and purpose. And every single person in this room and every person that we are with on a daily basis is a human being, and we must value them and see their perspectives, and yet still stand for truth. So my condolences to, to all the families of any of the victims within these recent horrible things that happened this past couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. On August twenty-third, I attended the Class Policy Summit. That's Colorado Leaders for Academic Success, where we discussed different policies and literacy and teaching methods. We had several members here from the State Board of Education who spoke on the importance of local control, quality instruction, traditional schools and charter schools. There was also an update on pending Supreme Court decisions and how they will impact educations. We had presentations from a consulting firm, and I was very proud that they highlighted several of the D forty-nine policies to include the Parents' Bill of Rights and Responsibilities, which they shared with, with different board members from around the state. We also had some very energetic protesters. And I have to say that I agreed with probably eighty to eighty-five percent of their signs, except I thought we should, you know, keep Elmo out of it. But I loved watching them exercise their First Amendment rights to associate and to have their voices heard. And I enjoyed the energy, and I really did agree with a lot of the signs. Let teachers teach. Hands off my history. And like I said, other than I think we should leave Elmo at home, I thought it was, you know, really good to see the expression of the First Amendment. And at the same point, I was kinda wishing they were inside and they'd hear that maybe it wasn't quite what they thought it was. And so I really enjoyed that. I attended the Student Board of Representatives meeting where we had several thoughtful discussions about upcoming policies and the election. Our student board will be hosting that candidate forum. I will not get a sneak peek at the questions. I wouldn't do that. And I really enjoy having them be big participants in running that upcoming forum. I also enjoyed it when Superintendent Hiltz appointed one of the students as superintendent for the day. And she got to wear the superintendent badge and try to make decisions after hearing all of the arguments. And I think the upshot was, is she decided, it's not as easy as it looks from the outside when you have to listen to a variety of opinions and come to determinations. Let me think, what else did we do? Oh, the Power Zone Family Fun Day was great, and I just wanted you to know that Bethany did share some of that funnel cake with me, which was really good, and that way I didn't eat an entire one myself, which I don't need. Okay, so then I just have a very quick administrative update. So if you wanna turn that off, Lynette. Homecoming events kicked off, and it looks like everybody's having a really good time. Falcon had their homecoming parade. D forty-nine celebrated International Literacy Day. And some of the students from the Joy Club at Horizon Middle School made cat toys to donate to the Pike's Peak Humane Society. And they also wrote notes of appreciation for the staff. So here's a group of middle schoolers, and they wanted to say thank you to the staff and make some kitty cats happy. Now, that was just one fraction of what happens in this district. And I encourage you to visit our Facebook page. I encourage you to read Discover Magazine. You'll always hear about the negative things that might come about. But it's really important to also learn that there are two sides to every story, and we really have some incredible kids. And that's all I have for the administrative update. Oh, there was one more thing I wanted to touch base on, the security team. Our security team would give their lives to protect any student in this district. And I think you guys have seen it, and you have felt it. And so I want to commend them. I also wanted to do, just, just touch base on one really critical topic. A lot of us in this room have been impacted by suicide. And we know the depth of pain that that causes. We have lost students in this district to suicide, a lot of them because of bullying. And it didn't have necessarily one specific demographic. And so I just want you to know, there's a lot of people in this district who care. And they care about our kids, and they watch for indications or signs or warnings. Also, kids who abuse drugs and alcohol at a much, they're also at a much higher risk for suicide. And that is a serious topic, and it's one we should all take seriously with keeping students safe. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our security team. I know every time there is a school shooting anywhere, I know Mr. Hiltz, I know Mr. Smith, I know everyone in this district. We think of you, we think of Angie, we think of Vivian, we think of the kids that we interact with every day. We think about the kids in kindergarten. We think about the third grader, we think about the sixth grader. And every school shooting makes us stop and look, are we doing enough? And I don't know if we could ever do enough, but we will never stop trying. So that's the other thing I wanted to add. Okay, can I get a motion for Action Item seven point one?
I move to approve the new job description for Information Technology Specialist as presented.
Second. Okay, can I get a vote?
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for Action Item seven point two?
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six graduation dates and times as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, can I get a motion for Action Item seven point three?
I move to approve the revisions to the policies listed under the Policy and Procedure Review.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for Action Item seven point four?
I move to approve the official survey date for Impact Aid.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll do something.
Hey, Director Livia Wright?
So just as a point of information for folks in our community, this is the survey for Impact Aid for Military Connected. It's a really, really big deal in our budget because of the number of students that we have who are military-connected. We have to pick one day to survey. And basically, the decision is, on that specific day, does a parent work either at a base, you know, either is the parent active duty that specific day? So for those of us who served in the reserves, if their orders were that day, they counted. If they didn't, they didn't. If they weren't on orders that day, they didn't, as well as people who work on federal property. This is really important, both for determining that money, but also that's a part of how we've qualified for DODA grants, is by using that survey impact data to be able to demonstrate the number of military-impacted families. So as you see those forms come home, please, please, please remember to return them. Even if your child is not military-connected, the only way we can make sure we haven't missed somebody is by getting a form from everybody.
Okay, can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for Item seven point five?
I move to approve the Resolution for Constitution Day.
Second. Any discussion? Director DiVola?
Yes. Constitution Day comes around every year, September seventeenth this year. And it's always a good reminder of where our country came from and what our founding documents were. And I really value the fact that District Forty-nine has so many events and so many activities around National Constitution Day. In every school, they have some sort of recognition of either reading the Constitution, doing a project on the Constitution, reciting things, assemblies. And it's always heartwarming to see that we are really focused on where, where we came from.
Now, I'm gonna not try to put the student board on the spot, but do you remember any of the Constitution Day activities that you've participated in as students for District Forty-nine?
I'm sure we participated in some, um, if we remember them. Now, see, that's a different question. I'm in this, okay, you get it, yeah, get it.
I think we, like, read it and then did, like, a little, like, coloring page. It was in, like, elementary school. I think I remember that, but other than that, I, don't ask me.
To be honest, as students, we're just trying to get through the day. So if, if, if they're like, hey, like, we're gonna do this fun activity, we're like, oh, yeah, definitely, we'll do this fun activity. And, and sometimes we don't even realize it's for a specific day or something like that. We're just trying to get through the day. But I, I am sure that we have done the activities, and I'm sure that when we did them, we had absolute blast. And I'm sure that when we do them this year, we will have an absolute blast.
Director DiVola? So what I'm hearing is that we need to tell the students why this day is important-
Yes.
-so that they can remember it better.
Yeah, so they don't, they don't-
I will take that to heart, thank you.
Yeah, so they don't end up being on the student board and then come to a board meeting and then get put on the spot and asked if they ever, so that way they know.
That, that sounds good. Which actually plays into why we want to make US history in our civics course even more tight.
Speaking of which, Superintendent Hiltz is gonna weigh in on this matter.
So you all received an email on the ninth from my senior executive assistant, Barbara Austin Sealy, that includes a link to a Google document that is nine pages long, mostly single-spaced, of all the activities, which is why I can tell Viv that you guys will be studying the seven principles of the Constitution through a NearPod activity at PPEC in Spring Studio. And as, as board members who reviewed this will know, there are many dozens of activities. Lots of them are linked, so you can go to the resource. It includes things like Constituting America. It includes the US Constitution Project, multiple curricular resources. This is a thorough and comprehensive set of learning plans. Lots of our schools, especially our elementary schools, will wear red, white, and blue in celebration of the United States of America. And what, this is the opposite of checking a box. I've been in enough schools in thirty-five years in education to know that when these kinds of state requirements or even board requirements are established, sometimes, sometimes schools just do the minimum because it's, it's a box to be checked. It's very clear from looking at all of the different kinds of activities, school-wide assemblies, big projects across multiple curricular areas, not just in social studies, that our educators take this seriously. They value the experience. And the, the only thing that they could do a little bit better is to make them more memorable for our high school students.
You know what, Superintendent Hiltz? I am looking forward to this year. I cannot wait. I know it's gonna be one to remember. It's gonna, I'm so excited. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I want the two of you to report back to me towards the end of September and let me know what your favorite-
Yes, of course.
-candy bars are because you've earned them, trust me.
Yeah, we, we will shout it from the rooftops. Thank you.
Okay, have we voted on this one yet?
No, we haven't yet.
Okay. Can I get a vote if there's no more discussion?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. Next up, can I get a motion for Action Item seven point six?
I move to approve revisions to Policy KEA, Stakeholder Grievance as Presented.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. Okay. Next up, we are going to, and I've got a staple here, but I see the wonderful Heather Diaz approaching the podium for Item nine point one.
Good evening, board, how are you? Good. Tonight, we're bringing you just a handful of the school fees that weren't brought to you in April, I believe. We work with schools, the beginning of the school year, to see if there was anything that they had missed or needed to increase or decrease. And this is what we brought to you tonight. Is there any questions?
Now, student board, I know your parents really love it when you tell them that you need money for different student fees. So I'm sure that discussion always goes well. Do you have any input on student fees?
Um, you're right, my mother just loves it. When I come to her and I say, hey, these are the student fees, and she goes, thank you for telling me that two days before their day. I think, oh, that's my school, sorry. I'm, I'm so sorry, I hadn't looked at the names until. The fees seem reasonable. And we will pay them. So, thank you so... Thank you for the dedication and effort into doing this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
She's gonna do the presentation here in just a minute, but go ahead and...
Yeah, it's great. It's, um, I don't really know the fees anyway because she just pays them. But I know it's middle and high school, so it's a little different. But yeah, the fees are great. Good job.
Okay.
So, we just brought a few of them that Sand Creek and Power Zone had. The Sand Creek Zone brought in some different changes to their cheer fees. They had them lumped together, so they separated them out and decreased one and increased the others after they separated them out. PPEC and Spring Studios with coming into the Sand Creek Zone added some fees going into this new school year. And then the Power Zone... Sorry, it's really small. I think they just added, thank you, a couple field trips. And Vista Ridge High School has a new dance classes. So, we added their dance classes into, into this piece. Other than that, those are the two zones that had anything new.
Do we have any questions? Director Heil?
Yeah, just a quick note for the community that, you know, school districts don't usually do this. And, you know, typically, your child goes and signs up for a program, and then you find out after that what it's going to cost you. Or you might find out, here's an expense, and then, oh, here's another expense, and here's another expense. And just the fact that we're putting these things out there, being very transparent, is, I think, a wonderful service that we're providing for our parents. And so, thank you for all the work that goes into this.
You're welcome. And then, Director Livia Wright, you're usually very good about, too, when people apply for free and reduced programs and how that can impact these fees. So, if you don't mind speaking to that, that would be great.
Sure. So, actually, two pieces. So, I'll speak to that part first. So, one of the goals when we made this comprehensive fee setup is to remind folks that the Board of Education provides supplements. So, this is not supplemented by fees charged. So, the families who pay the fees are not paying, are not covering the cost of free and reduced lunch students who are not paying the fee. The fee of the free or reduced lunch student comes from the board budget. And so, those fees are then paid from our board budget into the account so that every, so each student's accounted for in terms of contributing those amounts. What that also does, because we have made all of our organizations be incredibly transparent on their fees, so if you look at the cheerleading one, for example, they have a list of exact, every single expense that's involved in the entire season, that's charged as one complete fee. So, rather than saying, sure, cheerleading's 250 bucks, but now we're gonna hit you up with a bill after a bill after a bill after a bill, which actually then eliminated kids who were free or reduced from actually participating because it wasn't included in the full fee. By having that full fee, number one, as a parent, you know exactly what it's gonna cost you. Number two, we're actually able to increase the participation of all students, regardless of financial need, by the board being able to cover that supplement and ensure that all of those students have access to those programs. The other piece that our district does different than I think anyone else, and this began a good decade ago when we demanded transparency on all of our fees, is although, when you get your little fee list as a parent, you don't see this breakdown, the breakdowns are available. So, again, if you pull up and look at that cheer one, you can see every single thing that's being paid for with your fee, so you know exactly where it's going for. That's true for every single activity and course fee that's charged in District 49. There is a sheet like this for every single activity or fee. So, if you're not sure where that fee went, your school can provide that sheet to you. You can also find them in the board packets when those fees were approved because we get them as well.
Thank you. Vivian, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the transparency that our board has with fees, especially with Spring Studio. We have a very wonderful bustling robotics program. And a lot of families wonder what the fees are for the robotics program. And so, to have such transparency is really wonderful. I do know that Angie had a question, though, so I pass it off to her. But thank you.
What are the new, like, fees for Banning's School District? Because I know our homeschool is Sand Creek, so where would we find those specific ones for the charters?
That's defined by your charter board. We have no control over the fees. All of those things are determined by your charter school board because they have a separate governing body.
Director Davola?
So, I would actually encourage you to email or reach out to your board members at the Banning Lewis Ranch, and I'm sure they would be happy to provide you that information.
And that is something unique that we do here with our Student Board. We have our traditional schools, even though a lot of them are really cutting-edge and outside of the box. And then we have our charter schools. And the charter schools have their own Board of Education. However, the charter school students still participate with the Student Board of Representatives because we want to hear student voices from across all of our schools. And I think it's been a very good experience for the people. Like, you're in a hybrid school, and you are in a charter school. And so, next week, we might have someone from our more traditional schools, but we wanna hear student voices from all of our schools. Are there any other questions for Ms. Diaz while she's here? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there are no objections, this will be moved forward for action. And next up, we have the Student Count Trend Budget Update.
Good evening. So, this is very similar to the last time that I was before you at the last board meeting. I have taken away a lot of the budget reminders this time and have just come back with updates on actual student counts. It's still in the same layout as last time with the same meanings of all of the areas of the graph. This is our district-operated portfolio. So, this is all of our schools that we operate that would exclude our charters and our BOCs. And you'll notice from the last time, there's been two weeks since our last update. So, we are looking down just a little bit from two weeks ago. The projections do not change as much. There was a slight change in the projections overall because they are a three-year historical trend. So, it doesn't change a lot when there's a little bit of movement. But we're still looking good where we will still project to come in above what we used for budget numbers. Falcon Zone is down by about seven students from last time, but they're staying pretty steady from the last projection that we had. We are currently anticipating that they may come in slightly below budget, but it will be very small amounts. And this is the backup data to give you the details around each individual school, if you would like to see it. I'll kind of skip over this one. It's kind of a look for whatever you're particularly interested in the details on. Sand Creek Zone is definitely projected to be above budget as well. And they're just a few below from two weeks ago as well. And that follows the trend that we see every year. Kind of, we have a spike and then we kind of mellow out. Same scenario with the Sand Creek Zone numbers. This is your detail by school, if you have any desire to look at the schools individually. And then Power Zone is also projecting to be above budgeted numbers. In this case, they're only two down from two weeks ago, and their projection has stayed very steady. And then their individual school numbers. And then this is where our charters come in. So, we do not always get updates on the weekly for all of the charters. So, we were short, I believe, three of our charters on any updates. So, in this case, even though there has been fluctuation, it is not... We don't have all of them in our CIS, so that way, our student information system. So, we're only able to update as they're able to get us those informations. They are looking to be right on point with budget. BOCs is growing. Every time, every time we look at it, they have even more students enrolled. So, they are definitely trending higher, even past the typical trend that the rest of the district has. And they are projecting to be well above what we've budgeted. And then this is our total district umbrella, which encapsulates everything. We are still very much above what we budgeted. However, most of that will be passing through to our charters and the BOCs. And then here's just a summary. I kind of talked about how this is all from our power schools. So, if we have a charter that is off our student information system, it may not be as up-to-date as some of the other lines. This is the summary where district-operated, we're up 121 overall for projected from budget. Falcon Zone specifically is projected to be down 92. Sand Creek Zone is projected to be up 145. And Power Zone is projected up 68. Charter schools are down 91. ER BOCs are projected to be up 1,692. Because of the huge shift that we saw in the graph on the BOCs from two weeks ago to now, that has actually drastically shifted their projected number because of how steep that shift was. And then overall, 1,722 is where we're projected to be up. Do you guys have any questions?
Vivian?
Forgive me for not knowing, but what are BOCs? I'm so confused. I'm so sorry. I don't know what they are.
That's a great question. So, BOCs are when, there's typically a lot of smaller districts or needs of districts that kind of come together and they create something called a BOCs. And forgive me for not knowing, Peter may know the...
It is a Board of Cooperative Educational Services. That's the acronym.
Yes. And they basically come together and have a BOCs to be able to provide them certain services. So, the examples that I know are a lot of rural districts out east may combine to use a BOCs because they can't afford to have special education services, potentially, for their one district because they're so small. So, they would band together and have higher one to service the entire area. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Director Heil, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for the weekly updates. It's been really illuminating, and I haven't seen that from previous chiefs, so I appreciate it. When we do the budgeting, the forecast, the best possible outcome is to come in just a little bit above projection, right? So, that says, you know, we planned appropriately, and then we got a little bit of extra money to use for contingencies or whatever. So, I'm really impressed about how close we are on our projections. Now, like, ER BOCs, they are, like, way over. That creates a set of problems, although it's a good set of problems to have. Like, okay, do we have enough facilities? Do we have enough teachers, things like that? So, that can, that can kind of create a set of problems that have to be addressed. But I don't see that in this particular packet, but there have been previous updates that gave the charters. And a few of them, you know, just two or three maybe, are coming in well below. How do we support them?
Well... Pretty much as far as the BOCs and charters, the way that we work with them, it's very much contractual, and it's very much based on how many students they're funded on. Now, because of that, there's not really an additional support, so to speak, as far as per pupil revenue passed through. However, we do provide a lot of other supports in other areas as they're authorizing districts. So, this particular area is not a lot of wiggle room to be able to give them additional resources because we are just as needy of those resources for our pupils, and it's based on pupil count. But beyond that, we support them in a lot of other ways.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I actually have a question for the board. It's a little bit more of a housekeeping question. This is a really critical report. We start tracking this in mid-July. We'll track it through mid-October because we need to get past the October count, and there'll be kind of a final true-up. That's often what that ending dip is related to. My question for the board is real simple. Are you seeing this just the right amount of times? Or are you seeing it a little too frequently? Or would you like to see, would all board members like to see that weekly update? Would you like this to be a presentation or an information item? If you look at the, can you, can you take us to Slide 2, please? If you just look at the overall, generally, the action happens in the first two weeks of August, and then it happens again at the end of September into October. That's kind of where big movements happen. But then there's this nice six or seven-week period where it's fairly stable. And I just want to make sure that we're not over-presenting or under-presenting and that we're meeting the board's expectations.
Director Schmidt?
I think I would prefer to see these weekly updates that you have. You know, send it to all board so we can all see.
Director Heil?
Yeah, I thought all of us were receiving it. But if I'm special because I'm the treasurer, I appreciate the attention. Yeah, the question about whether it should be an information item is really a question for the public. And so, I think that it would be an appropriate thing for us to present that question at the DAC.
Director Livia Wright? So, information items, though, are still viewable by public, correct? They're just not...
Yes, ma'am. Information items are viewable, but they don't... Typically, we do not present information items, but we include them, and they are publicly viewable.
So, knowing that and knowing that it would be explicitly listed, my preference would be, because I don't think it adds a work burden, to send, you know, pass through the weekly email because it's already there, and it's not like you're doing an extra compilation. Do a presentation at the beginning when we're doing that first. Hey, here's our initial look. Remember, you'll be getting updates. The community updates will be in that as an information item. And then do a presentation when we're getting closer to the end and we know the true-up, rather than every single meeting. Just because then we still have the information, it's still available publicly as an information item. We get a presentation at kind of the two big points. But then we're not asking you to be here every single meeting. That's twice a month for August, September, October. And really, in the end, November, it's November, I think, when we really have the final true-up. That's a lot of extra presentation time. And I realize you're just populating the slides, but then we're also having you stand here every meeting. And there are some meetings you might not have, be on the agenda four times, and you might actually be able to be home. And I think that, from my one board member perspective, I think that would balance the need for information at the board level, the accessibility for the community, and respect for the time of our employees.
Director Davola?
I have to agree with Director Livia Wright. I think that's gonna, that's gonna be our best way of handling it so that we are getting those weekly updates. However, you don't have to come to every board meeting, and we're also getting the two big N's, so ditto.
And from what I kind of came in towards the tail end of, I have to agree, although we love seeing you. And I also want the Student Board to know that in addition to you reporting back to us on your Constitution Day activities, Rebecca will never forget the acronym BOCs again. And the one thing that you may want to share just for the public, because earlier you mentioned pass-through. So, they could understand real quick how pass-through works with charter schools with BOCs.
Absolutely. So, any authorizer, any entity that we are the authorizer of, CDE, who is the Colorado Department of Education, my goodness, when they give us our funding, we are the pass-through entity. We take the funding, and then based on the number of pupils that they have or their student count, we pass through the proportionate amount to the charters and the BOCs. Any questions about it?
Thank you for explaining it. Now I know.
It's kind of like if you, I don't know if you get an allowance or anything, but your parents earn the money and then they pass it through to you. So, it's kind of like that. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, then will you be here for the next one, too? Hang on, just one second here.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak on record. What I, what I am sort of inviting as the adjustment from the board is that we'll have a presentation at the August regular meeting, which is usually the second week of August. And then again, at the September work session, which is as close as we are just before October count. And then we'll have a report, but it'll be in the context of larger budget discussions. And then we'll have a report, but it'll be in the context of, of larger budget discussions later on. So those will be the presentations, August regular, September work, and then weekly emails. But every time the board meets in, in August and September, we'll make it an information item if it's not a presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we are on to 9.3.
Okay, so I'm up here for the next two as well. You guys are stuck with me for a minute here. As far as this first one, this is some housekeeping from last year. So you guys have already approved a resolution for us to use beginning fund balance from last year. However, those were very projected numbers. We actually had more funds that were spending last year of fund balance than what we actually needed. But there were some that fell short a little bit, so we needed to come back and tweak our numbers before we go through our audit process every year. So this is essentially the updated numbers. If you compare this to what we brought to you in June, you'll notice our Fund 10 was at 7.1-ish, and it's jumped up to 8.8. So that did increase a little bit. We did not end up spending any fund balance in our Fund 14, so that's been removed. So just as a point of clarity, this is not in addition to what you have already approved. This is a new number, just, just to make sure that's clear. Our insurance fund, Fund 18, we also... You know what? I just caught an error. Our insurance fund should be on this. So we still need to have the same dollar amount. Actually, it's not on here, and that's why, because it's the same dollar amount of what we already approved. That's why it's not on here. So any of these are ones that have changed. My apologies. So Insurance Fund 18 stayed the same. Our MLO Fund 14 stayed the same. Our, our Preschool Fund 19 did go up just a bit from, it's actually lowered. That one's lowered. It's 1.9 million down to 194,000 because that was the only amount left in their fund balance. Nutrition Services Fund changed from 1.4 million down to 700,000. Our Base 49 Fund, I'm sorry, 27, it went from 452,000 down to 90,301. Our Capital Reserve Fund went from 621 million down to 15 million. And our Fund 64 Health Insurance Fund was left off of the initial resolution, and so it is a new addition here in the amount of 1.47. Any questions?
Okay, if there are no objections, this will be moved forward for action. And we are on to the supplemental budget resolution, 9.4.
And this goes very much hand-in-hand with the last one. So any, any spending or appropriations that we have for 24, 25 school year, we did have to make some additional tweaks in this one. We brought every fund back. In the past, we've combined some funds in our appropriation resolution, and I've made the, the decision to split those out individually. I think that is more transparent. It's more clear. So we, instead of come, in the past, we had 10, 12, and 13 combined, and 23 and 29 combined. And I think it's more appropriate for them to be, to stand alone and be individually appropriated. So this is that new breakout along with any changes that we had to have for the dollar amounts. So the areas that we definitely saw an increase in spend is the General Fund specifically. Fund 12 and 13, even though they were combined with 10, did not need an increase. General Fund needed an increase. Our Transportation Fund needed an increase. Our Base 49 needed an increase, and our Health Insurance needed an increase. So we have kind of gone through and made sure that we have fully captured, now that we've made all adjustments for year-end and our audit is well underway, we have made sure that we are fully accounting for any appropriation that we have. We've also got a little bit of cushion in case there's any auditor adjustments, making sure that we are covered and we don't go over appropriations. Any questions?
Director Livia Wright?
So I noticed at the bottom of the resolution, because I have to sign it later when we do it, it says adopted this blank day of September 2025. Does that mean that you're looking for both this one and the last one to actually be approved at the September work session and have a, a short special? Or is it going to October?
If you already have a special session, it would be great, but we will not be finalized with our audit at that point, so it could go to the first session of October and be fine. So we could update that. But either way.
I just wanted to make sure if it was time necessary that we knew to put a, a five-minute special on that date.
Yeah, the sooner the better, just because we are, we have kicked off audit. We are in the middle of audit, and we want to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row and are compliant. But we will not finalize audit before the first board meeting in October.
And we are planning on having a special meeting, so I'll get more information of that, on that out. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we are on to item 9.5. And if you would like to see the actual revisions on vacation time, you'll have to refresh your board docs because that was just uploaded on vacation time. And so the only change this time will be on GBD. And the rest of the procedure reviews weren't, yeah. Are there any questions on policy and procedure reviews? Okay. So instead of a red line, I think it's a blue line, the way it appears. Yeah.
There seems to be quite a few changes, so do we want to move this to the end, or?
It mentions vacation being taken in one-hour increments. And then at the time of separation from the district, any earned but unused vacation time will be paid to employee at his/her regularly hour rate of pay. And those are the only ones that have been changed. Yes, I have blue letters with two changes.
I found the blue letters. No.
So my one question is, so when it says it changed to hourly increments, seeing as I can't read it, because what we have is, what I have on my screen is impossible to find anything in, is that for hourly employees only, or are they allowing teachers to do it instead of half-day, full-day?
It, it's the second characterization. Sometimes people just need that hour, and so, and under the current system, you have to take four, but you only needed one, and so we wanted, we felt like it's a, a benefit to employees to be a little bit more granular, and it's definitely something our, our workforce has asked for.
Right. So it includes all employees, not just, so those who are...
That is, that is absolutely my understanding. This is a, the GBD applies. But is there somebody in the room that will correct me? Nope, I don't think so. I, if I am misspeaking, but I'm, I'm very confident I'm not, but if I'm misspeaking, I will correct that with you before we get to an action item.
I was just curious, because as a former teacher, that would have been incredible, because we used to only be able to take half or full. It was half or full.
Yeah.
And like literally, if you're like, but I'm only leaving the last half hour, and it's my, you know, plan, or I got someone to cover, and you're losing an entire half-day, it stunk. So I like that change, but I understand why sometimes logistically it didn't work.
Director D'Vola?
Yeah, I agree. That one-hour increment is very generous, because where I'm at, we have a two-hour.
Minimum, yeah.
Yep. And so that's, that's awesome. I like it. As a teacher, that's great.
Yeah, as I'm, as I'm looking at it further, I'm increasingly confident this is, this applies to staff. There is, there is a little bit of extra clarification below related to administrative license, ESP, and professional technical. And if there needed to be that clarification earlier, I'm confident it would have been in there, and it's not.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so for whatever reason, my com, my copy isn't loading with any of the markup. So comms, can you, I see the, the changes that are here is, can you scroll up and see, so I can see if there are any other changes of substance? Yes. Okay, great. So thank you. That's all I needed to see.
And if there are no objections, this will be moved forward for action with the correct things uploaded so everyone can read them to the next meeting. Okay, we are on to 9.6 Policy Proposal, JBAA Access to Sex Segregated Facilities. And I know we're going to have some discussion over this one. One objection, or one thing that has been brought up is to remove ambiguous language. That's something that we could also discuss in the event it should move forward. Or would that be more of something for regulation?
Director Thompson, I see you're looking at me, so this is Brad Miller speaking. It would be appropriate, it's, it's not absolutely necessary, but the proposed language change, which I perceive to be to a, a request to remove a clause that says, or other reasonable option on the second bullet, under accommodations for privacy. I would prefer that you make, you obtain consensus to make that change so that when we go into a, a time when you're voting on it at a subsequent meeting, that's already clarified, and you're not pushing to a, a further meeting or, or something, because that could be perceived as material. So if that would be your consensus, I think that's, it doesn't diminish the policy in any real material way. I do want to point out, however, that I, I heard the comments, and if you look down at item three, the prohibitions, there are two specific bullet points that I think clarify. And one of them being that no student shall be permitted to access sex segregated facilities inconsistent with their biological sex, blah, blah, blah. And then the third policy, the third prohibition saying that the, any prior guidances or understandings are rescinded. I think that gives clarity to this, to this question in part two, but I also don't have a sort of material objection to removing it.
Director D'Vola?
Then I move to remove the... Where is it? Let me find it. The phrase "other reasonable option" from bullet point two, under two. And add in three, bullet point three, the word policies, comma, accommodations, or guidance. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, so right there, you're, so you're saying that accommodations are rescinded?
That would be accommodations allowing access based on gender identity are rescinded.
So a couple of things, I, Brad Miller speaking again. I don't know that I see the purpose for adding accommodations down in that lower bullet. And remember, this is a discussion, so what, what we're doing is, I, I think you just want to give some direction as, and I think right now I'm sort of the custodian, having authored this, and so you would just direct me to provide you a, a red line going into the next meeting.
Well, then, uh, well, I had a second, so do I have to? Go back?
Oh, oh, because we're in discussion.
We're not, this is not...
Sorry.
And I think it's worthwhile to have a discussion before there's any modifications, so...
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. So I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of input as to this proposed policy. And Director Schmidt?
Okay, let me start again. HB 231057 does provide accommodations for new and renovated buildings for students who are uncomfortable with sex segregated bathrooms. And as mentioned, D49 already does make accommodations. However, in my opinion, accommodations do not give anyone the right to compromise the privacy of the rest of the student body, most of whom want a sex segregated facility. Sex segregated facilities should still be available to the students who want them. It goes both ways, as mentioned earlier. A single-use, non-gender facility is a reasonable option to keep kids who are uncomfortable in sex segregated bathrooms and values all people. Bathrooms, locker rooms, and private spaces are not political playgrounds. JBAA offers a reasonable, legal option. I would personally like to discuss parental notification and consent for parents who are not aware of their child wanting to have a non-gender bathroom.
And I think that would be a different policy, so...
We already have that.
Yeah.
That already exists.
Director D'Vola? You didn't raise your hand. Director Heil, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand. So if you would like to go, I'm sure Director D'Vola wouldn't mind.
So girls have a right to feel safe in their private spaces. That is a legitimate concern. Student, trans students have rights against discrimination based on gender expression. These two rights are in conflict, and we could produce a policy that carefully balances the two with care and respect for all. This policy upholds the rights of cisgender girls by trampling over the rights of trans students. It declares a student must use the bathroom associated with their gender as assigned at birth. A student indistinguishable from other girls sent into the boys' bathrooms and locker rooms has a target on their back. It is a safety issue. This creates a scenario in which knowingly and unintentionally places students at an elevated risk of verbal, physical, and even sexual abuse, which is morally indefensible. This policy is also legally indefensible and represents an abrogation of our fiduciary duty to our schools and our taxpayers. That the policy is in conflict with state law is unquestioned. Colorado is very explicit about this topic in statute and in the Constitution. Federal law is less clear. Marie has done extensive research into applicable case law, and I'll defer to her on that. There's chatter about Title IX, but my assessment is that nothing there has changed. People talk about Trump amending it, but changing laws is a power of Congress. Denver Public Schools has recently been found in violation of Title IX, but their original complaint would likely have been found in violation during any previous administration. They took away a second-floor high school girls' bathroom, designated it as all-gender. Since the boys still had their own second-floor bathroom, that's exactly the kind of gender inequality that Title IX was designed to address. Later, DPS attempted to address the inequality by changing the boys' bathroom to all-gender. Per Chalkbeat's reporting, the Federal Office of Civil Rights called the move "a misguided effort that ended DPS's different treatment of girls, but did not fix its Title IX violation." That argument is self-contradictory and seems unlikely to survive a legal challenge. The state and federal government have placed us... The state and federal government have placed us in a position where we cannot establish a policy without antagonizing at least one of them. If we have to pick a fight, I'd rather pick the fight we can win, the position which is both legally and morally defensible. This policy isn't it.
Okay. And if you could please hold the applause, this is the working portion of the meeting. Director Livia Wright?
So I, I have a, a question of clarification. So what is our plan for, without taking my, it's a point of clarification of how we're running this, so can I not use up my time to be able to comment on that? Are we going to do just rounds and rounds until everyone's had an opportunity to say everything they wanted to say? Are we limited, are you, I want to know the plan ahead of time because that impacts what I have to say and how I say it.
Okay, we're going to do one round of up to three minutes each and then a second round of one minute for follow-on conversation.
So we're going to do four minutes total and whether folks feel like they've had, said everything they needed to say, we're only doing four minutes? Or will there be addition to add minutes or?
That, that would be something we could discuss with the board and see what the board wants to do.
All right, then I'll just read super fast, but I want my full three minutes, please.
Director D'Vola? No, she's going to wait, I think, or are you?
No, no.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said you were going to wait and now I understand you want your three minutes now.
Okay, yeah, well, right, because I have no idea how it's going, so I'm going to just read fast rather than any other way of approaching. Go on ahead.
Yep. Okay, so first I'm going to give some historical context in Colorado. In 2013, the Title IX OCR Mathis decision required all K to 12 public schools in Colorado to allow students to access bathrooms aligned with their gender identity. Requiring use of a single stall bathroom was found to be insufficient accommodation. All public schools, including all D49 public schools, complied with this OCR finding, which means we have been compliant with it for 12 years. In D49, our practice has been when a student and parent together request an accommodation based on gender identity for school administration, the school administration, parent, and student meet together to develop a plan that's highly individualized to that student that both the student and parent agree to. This may include accessing bathrooms according to their gender identity, accessing single stall, or a combination of both. It has also been our practice as a district to allow cisgender students to request access to private bathrooms in changing areas or alternative accommodations if they've had concerns in an attempt to balance the interests of all while still being compliant with the Mathis decision. In the 12 years this has been in place, there have been zero incidents of trans students assaulting a cisgender student in a bathroom in D49, and I believe that is also true in the entire state. Although this was driven by the Mathis decision, which is a Title IX finding, this could now be called into question given the feds have reversed their interpretation, not the statute. Colorado now also has state statute that explicitly added gender identity and gender expression to the state anti-discrimination laws. This essentially provides the same protection and requirements as Mathis on a much broader level, and it causes all places of public accommodation, not just schools. The current legal landscape is because Mathis was a Title IX, I'll skip those two. Federally, Grimm filed in 2015, was decided at the appellate level in 2020, and then the Supreme Court refused to hear that, letting it stand in 2021. In 2021, all six conservative judges were present. They allowed to stand a case, Grimm actually allowed a transgender student to access bathrooms according to their gender identity, and the current Supreme Court, with the exception of Katanji Johnson, allowed that decision to stand. That is now the rule in the Fourth Circuit. Doe versus South Carolina is still at the appellate level. However, yesterday, our current Supreme Court refused the request by the state of California to provide an emergency order banning trans student from using the bathroom that aligns with their gender identity, which means currently the Supreme Court has allowed the appellate, the appellate decision to stand while the case is ruling through, which means the transgender student is still using the bathroom according to their gender identity. That's where the Supreme Court is on those two pieces now. In US versus Skermetti, that is the case where there was gender-affirming care. When the court issued that decision, they said the gender-affirming care for minors banned in Tennessee could stand, but it was not based on sex, it was based on age and therefore did not come under Title IX or the Title Four, or the 14th Amendment. The two other cases that are currently being considered.
Director D'Vola?
All right, so I just have a question for everyone to consider. Oh, no, this is part of my time. So I did hear a lot of discussion about making sure that our students are not feeling displaced or trampled on. And so I have this question. Is it okay to displace and trample on the rights of biological girls who deserve a safe space and deserve privacy that do not have biological males in that, in that space? Is, is that not okay? And just to go back to, let's just talk about common sense just for a second. The majority of people in the United States of America agree that it is very important that we are protecting girls in girls' private spaces and we're protecting boys in boys' private spaces and we're not allowing the fluid, fluidity of going back and forth between the two. We are also giving accommodations to those students who do not feel comfortable being in the bathroom of their biological sex. So if they are not feeling comfortable for that, we have those accommodations where they can go to a private and, and actually, it's probably preferable for them to be in a separate, single-use, single-stall bathroom to give them the utmost privacy that they also deserve. We cannot trample on somebody else's rights back and forth. This is a very tricky issue, but we have three separate categories here. So it's very important for us to distinguish that and make sure that we are protecting girls and not trampling on their safety, because that is really important. And it's also important for our biological males. There are, there have been reports of a biological female going into a boy's bathrooms and harassing the boys. I mean, we had a constituent talk about someone in the workplace coming in while he's using the urinal. I mean, how, that's very uncomfortable, that's not okay. So it's not okay on, on both ends. That's why that we have these accommodations, so that we have safe spaces for all of our kids, not just letting people trample on each other's rights.
You know, it's kind of interesting because what we have here is federal regulations versus state law. And changing administrations can modify those federal regulations. The original intent of Title IX was to prohibit discrimination based on sex in education programs and activities that receive federal financial assistance. Title IX reads, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participa, participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. All federal agencies that provide grants of financial assistance are required to enforce Title IX nondiscrimination mandate. ED gives grants of financial assistance to schools and colleges and to certain other entities and even includes vocational rehab programs and libraries." When it comes to protected classes in the state of Colorado, gender identity and gender expression is a protected class. Sex is a protected class. I think Director Livia Wright referred to that. So you have two different protected classes. And as I said before, when we were discussing our sports policy, I don't know how to square that circle. I don't know how you can protect the comfort level of, of boys and girls who may or may not want to share a private space with somebody who has a different biological makeup and still respect the rights of those who have a gender expression that is different. As far as they talk about single stall uses, and I think when they build new buildings, that's exactly how a lot of them are going to be built. I've also had discussions with Superintendent Hiltz and we talked about the dangers of stalls that go from, all the way from the top to all the way from the bottom, whether it be fire evacuation or the great ideas of students. Before, it's, it's like you said, before you take down a fence, it's a good idea to pay, to wonder why it was put up in the first place. So what I'm concerned about is respecting the rights, but to tell a biological girl or a biological boy, if you're not comfortable with somebody, a trans student sharing your private space, to communicate to that student that they're the problem, to me, that's where you get into a forced acceptance. And at the same point, we have anti-bullying policies, we have different things in place that we always want to make sure. And I will say this, the student board discussion was thoughtful and it took into considerations the feelings of a variety of students. So you get to this place where here's this puzzle piece. You have a federal regulation, you have a state law, but I think we have a moral imperative to try to find those solutions. And I like the direction we're going to find those solutions and try to teach, treat everyone with respect. Director Schmidt?
I still feel that the non-gendered, single-stall, single-use is the most respectful to everyone.
Director Heil?
And the problem with that is that the federal government or the, the court system, as Marie described, has found that to be, you know, a violation of the 14th Amendment, discrimination based on gender identity. So I like the idea of being able to provide that as an option, but we cannot enforce it. By the same token, if there's a student in the, you know, that's cisgender girl who feels unsafe because of somebody using their bathroom, we can also provide that as an option for them, but we cannot make them use it. One thing I don't want to see is 300 girls in one of our larger high schools all trying to use a single-user stall because there's one person in that school who makes them feel uncomfortable. And so this is where I come in and I say, we could have a policy that treats this by exception. We have this one particular student and we could ask them to use the single-user bathroom. Have we antagonized the state when we do that? Yes. But I think we would be able to defend that morally and I think it's the right choice that balances those, those concerns.
Director Livia Wright?
We basically have two options. We can adopt this policy. The risk there is we very likely will immediately have a lawsuit filed by one or more students or staff or community members who access our facilities in state court. We will immediately lose on that case because state law is very clear. We can then try to challenge in federal court due to the incongruence with current Title IX interpretation. However, we'll still have to allow trans access while, while that's being litigated, as is evidenced by current Supreme Court action. Because we openly defied state law by enacting the policy, it's also very, very likely we will also not have insurance coverage for this, so all costs will have to be from our district funds. Our other option is to follow, to leave it as we do, as we currently follow. The possible risks there, we have a Title IX complaint by a cisgender student for current federal OCR may side with them or may not. The gender is still considered a protected class in the state, but not there. However, states can have additional protected classes, Colorado does, so it's very likely if then pursued in federal court to determine which takes precedence, the feds will defer to the state law while it is litigated further, again, putting us in exactly the same position. However, financially, our insurance covers us when we didn't break the law.
Director D'Vola?
Yes, so there comes a time when we must take a moral stand on an issue and do the right thing regardless of what state law or federal law dictates. Current, here's an example. The Dred Scott decision was an absolutely terrible decision that the federal government had made, and finally it was overturned. Why? Because of people standing up against unjust laws. We are faced with the possibility of being sued on one side or the other. Do we want to be sued on what is morally right and righteous or do we want to be sued on the wrong side of history? This is extremely important and is vital important that we realize that yes, lawsuits are potentially there. We want to be sued on the, on the side of, of, of making sure that we're protecting our girls in girl spaces, our boys in boy spaces, and our students who identify as other students, being able to have their spaces as well. This is a very important issue and we should be on the right side of history.
If we could hold tight because this is the discussion portion. You know, the, the thought I had is also we are putting our principals and our teachers in a difficult situation. Yes, we risk an OCR complaint, we risk being sued for discrimination. Yes, we risk being sued by parents who are unhappy or who feel like we have violated their students' privacy by forcing an option onto them. And once again, I have to say this one's really tough because there's no perfect solutions. I am in favor of moving this forward and making sure that we always have a single stall provided for people who need it. And I, and I got to be clear, it's not just for students with a different gender expression. It could be a student who's uncomfortable for other reasons, including one time, one of our directors mentioned a part of an IEP or a 504, that there was extreme anxiety with being in the general population bathroom. What about the kid who doesn't have the IEP or the 504, who suffers that kind of anxiety and needs access to a single stall facility? So it goes beyond gender expression. And I know that we could go round and round and have a bunch of different opinions. Angie, are you raising your hand? I can't tell. Oh, no, that's fine. But do you have any comments you want to add to this?
I think that it's very important that we protect all the students and I think that if you really were to ask all of the student body, I'm 90% sure most of them would say that they really do not care who is using a bathroom. It is a bathroom. So I don't know who's in there, I don't see it, nobody else does. The problems that are actually going on in the bathrooms aren't being handled like they should be anyway. So I think that if you were to ask any, especially the public schools that are bigger, not everyone is paying attention to who is using a bathroom, you're just going to the bathroom. So I just think that, and I think that you should put single stall bathrooms because it's not, it can be used for different things. There are disabilities, you could get your leg broken and need to use that. There's different reasons to have a single stall bathroom, but I really do not think that it would really affect as many people as it seems to be affecting right now. I know a lot of my friends that I talked to after our last student board meeting said that they don't care. They don't see who's in the bathroom, they don't know who's in the bathroom, they're just using it. It's a bathroom, if you identify as a girl, who cares at this point? It's, it's kind of like this. Adults may care more than the students, but the students also, they don't, it's not that big of a deal to people, a good majority of the student body.
And, and I don't think you're wrong that a lot of people do feel that way and there are other people who feel differently. And so that's once again, trying to find, can we come up with solutions? I wish we were green and wrinkled and made of money and that we could retrofit all of our schools into single stalls. I think a lot of people would be happy with that, but we don't have that option at this point. So that's why we're looking into making accommodations. And Director Schmidt, I see, I think if we go just one more time.
There are grants available. I think we used one to retrofit and do the signage in Patriot High School. So I think we could get funds through grants if we're wanting to do this in more schools. But it sounds like we're already doing it in many schools.
Director Heil?
Yeah, and I think that hits at the, on the crux of it, right? Like we would love to be able to say, you know what, we're going to build a third full bathroom and anybody can use that. We've got a boys' bathroom, a girls' bathroom, and an all-used bathroom. That is as equal as we could possibly make it, but that takes money. So if the federal government wants to give us grants to pay for that work, we'd be happy to accept it. If our tax base would like to support us with a bond measure that pays for that, we would be happy to, to work with you on that. But until then, we're kind of stuck with what we have. Meanwhile, on a slightly separate subject, Madam President, we talked about a specific edit that we ought to resolve and I think we should each speak very briefly just to that edit so that we have some consensus on whether we're going to make that going forward.
Director Livia Wright?
Now that I got to do my, my fast reading, the whole point of all of that is the current conservative Supreme Court has allowed to stand in the Fourth Circuit, a decision that gave transgender students access to bathrooms based on gender identity, not biological sex. They've also let stand just yesterday, an injunction from the same circuit court against the state of South Carolina, again, allowing a transgender student access to bathroom based on gender identity despite a state law banning it. While that still works through the court system, so they're having it stand in place. So the likelihood is, any litigation is essentially going to do exactly the same here. If that's the case, letting those cases work through and leaving our policy where it stands, where our insurance company would absorb a significant portion of the cost of any litigation rather than it coming out of our general fund when we already need to find $9 million is a much smarter decision.
Director DiVola?
Yes. And then also, Angie, I appreciate your perspective, and it's important that we have those voices as well. As we heard tonight, though, there are current students who are feeling very uncomfortable in bathrooms with, with members that are of a different biological sex. And I think their rights are just as important as everybody else's. And so I believe this policy does stand in a position of accommodating and making sure that the rights are not being violated.
We received, I think it was in an email where somebody talked about the European model, about what they're implementing in Europe. And also, the Supreme Court has yet to take up some of these course, these cases. Letting it stand doesn't mean that they're completely agreeing with it. It's just, at this point, they're not going to take that up. In the United Kingdom, there was a recent Supreme Court ruling in April of 2025 established that for the purpose of the Equity Act of 2010, the term sex and women's right, women refer to biological sex. This unanimous decision clarified that the definition is based on biology and not on a person's gender identity or gender recognition certificate. While transgender people remain protected from discrimination under the Equity Act, this ruling allows for the exclusion of trans women from certain single-sex services or spaces designated for biological women. So if we decide to move forward with this policy, knowing that there could be a problem, then we would have to relook at it as a district to how far we're going to go. She's almost 90, so I take the call. She sounds healthy. Okay, so we need to go on to discuss modifications, and I know Director DiVola had mentioned a modification.
May I ask a question first on that? I believe there was an explicit suggestion of wording previously when we were in executive session. Can we actually review that first before we look at a whole bullet change? Do you know what I'm referring to, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Brad Miller speaking. I am familiar with what you said. I'm pulling this back up because somehow my iPad, I lost the policy.
If there's any confusion on that, we did have some community members who brought it up. They're still here. They might be able to direct us to the right spot.
No, I'm, I'm absolutely cognizant of the concern, the clause which was of concern, and we had explored a couple of options for resolving that as we discussed it separately. So the clause is in Bullet Two, after accommodations for privacy, the challenge has been with the clause, or other reasonable option. And notionally, that addresses the question of, does that give some sort of discretion to a school leader to provide something that's other than a single-stall use? And presumably, that could be expanded into thoughts around a guarded door around the girl's bathroom or something like that. I mean, I'm just speculating. And so then we talked about either just clearly removing that clause or providing, under prohibitions, an additional phrase, and I am wondering if Peter remembers it precisely.
That's what I was trying to add in there, was the accommodation piece.
So I believe what you said was, without violating the intent of this policy, comma.
That's basically added within that bullet.
It was, it was a new independent clause to begin the sentence, and I'm also pulling it up, but I believe it was the second bullet. Sorry.
It would have been in the third bullet of prohibitions.
Third bullet of prohibition.
Maybe the first.
I thought it was in addition to the sentence that they were asking about, instead of deleting the sentence. That was my memory, and we didn't make a decision, I don't think.
But the main concept was that, and I can speak to this as an administrator, the idea that a, that a phrase that allows other reasonable options could invalidate the entire policy is, is not respectfully realistic. If a principal, if a superintendent were to act that way, they'd be in clear violation of the intent of the policy. And we're not in the business of undermining our own chain of authority. Whether we agree or disagree with particulars of a policy, the board has the authority to set policy, and then we're, we're tasked to implement it. And so the, the kind of hypothetical that a, that a principal or other administrator would say, well, I'm going to give a reasonable accommodation and allow a student to do what is expressly prohibited in this policy, I, I think that is not a realistic scenario. But I understand, and I think the policy as written already prevents that, but if you want even clearer statement to that effect, that phrase, without violating the intent of this policy, would, would serve.
And so my, my proposal is, I know I hesitated because we did go back and forth in an earlier conversation, but I would propose that we place that clause that he just suggested, without violating the, the intent of this policy, at the beginning of Bullet Two, under Item Two. They reside in conjunction at that point.
So how would that read?
Bullet Two, "Without compromising the intent of this policy, comma, if a student or parent guardian requests an alternative, the school shall provide access to a single-user facility or other reasonable option without requiring disclosure of personal information beyond the request itself." The final clause of this is, I think, pretty pertinent and pretty important. We don't want to be placing our school leaders in a position of having to ask for your papers, you know, sort of, you know, to, to inquire too deeply as to the reason for someone's
I think that provision removes any ambiguity, if there was any, the way it follows up. So if we could make.
It would clarify, it would hold to the, the notion, as this policy is drafted, that biological males would not be able to use the female bathroom and vice versa. It would constrict it to other options. In this particular instance, there would either be a single stall or something like, we might, for example, have a nurse's bathroom that actually has a urinal and a, and a toilet, and that's not a single stall, it's something a little different than that. And I think that's where the, you know, the little bit of wiggle room is, is built in
Okay, I think that would be a good modification, then.
Angie had her hand up.
Yeah. Director Schmidt?
Angie had her hand up.
Oh, Angie, sorry, I wasn't looking that way.
I just had a question because I was reading it, and it says, if a student or parent guardian requests an alternative, what about the students who cannot go to their parents about this sort of thing without it outing them? Would it, would they be able to do it themselves, or would there be a policy that requires them to have to be outed to their parents?
Current District 49 policy requires for any student to ask for accommodate, for any student who is asking for accommodation under gender identity to do it with parent permission. So students do not in District 49 receive those accommodations without permission of the parent. There is explicit process and, and board policy on that, and that has been our practice overall, I believe, the entire time since Mathis.
So just to be clear, we, we would, I would interpret this that a student could make the request. We would disclose to parents, because we don't hide anything from parents. But in this instance, this isn't about a request for gender identity recognition, this is about use of a facility. So we would accommodate it, and then we might, we would then communicate with the parent that that request had been made.
As a practice in the district, too, just so you know, there are parents who do support what their child chooses, you know, what their gender identity is. And we also, so that's something where we do have parents who do consent and who do know what's going on with their kids' lives. And so it's a good question, but yeah. No other discussion about the proposed modification? Director Heil?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that that's my preference, and for exactly the reason that Brad gave. So we have a lot of buildings, they're going to have a lot of different configurations, but we're also going to be leading our students out to other facilities for field trips and things of that nature, right? So we, we don't have any direct control, and if there's not a single-user facility available, we have constrained them in policy, and so we need people to be able to make, you know, reasonable decisions based on what's available to them at the time.
So are you talking about off-of-district property?
Director DiVola?
I believe this policy covers our school buildings. I don't know if that would be something that this policy would cover.
I don't think it purports to address off-campus things, but once again, there could be, as, as one of you described, there could be a line, kind of like, you know, as I always laugh at the women at a, at a football game, they have the line out the door, and the men's room doesn't have a line. There might be a circumstance where we just need to have a quick adjustment. We need to have some flexibility saying, we're going to put an administrator by the door and let somebody go into the other room. All those sorts of things are possible.
Well, and that's what I was just thinking, because if you do have a single-stall facility and it's occupied, and if there's an emergency situation where someone needs access, to me, that would be a reasonable accommodation if there was someone there to guard and protect their privacy as well. And so that could fall under the category of a reasonable accommodation. Director Livia Wright?
Well, quite frankly, if you've been to a football game, I don't think there's a single stall in our football stadiums, and the school's locked, so where are you going to go to the bathroom? Same thing when we have plays, there isn't necessarily access to a single-stall bathroom in all of our, and when we have activities outside of school hours within our facilities, especially our outdoor facilities, some of those things are limited. And so giving someone flexibility so they can do the whole proverbial stand in front of the door, and I think every woman has probably at some point had a man stand outside the men's room and guard it while they went to pee, because there's way more toilets. Guys, it takes way longer to get through those toilets in, at a stadium for women than it does men.
Which is a good argument for a reasonable accommodation. Director Schmidt?
I just don't want to see reasonable, other reasonable option go into the Wild West, allowing things that are still taking away privacy rights of either boys or girls.
Well, I think that's already been addressed in that, without violating the intent of this policy. I think that that verbiage has already been discussed. Director Heil?
Yeah, we just, because we keep, because it keeps coming up about the, this scenario of being in a very crowded place and women wanting to use the restroom, I'll just tell you that I had that experience. I was in line to use one of the urinals. A young lady was like, hey, is anybody using the stall? If not, is that okay, right? And everybody was fine with it, and she came in, she uses the stall. There were zero problems. I relayed that story. I won't name any names, but we were preparing for a board meeting, and let's just say that there were several ladies who said, yep, I did that, too.
Director DiVola?
So I just want to make sure that there's no ambiguity in here. So I understand the, the reasoning for the possibility of other reasonable option. I think adding that sentence at the beginning without violating the, what, the intent.
Say it again.
I currently have it drafted, excuse me, as, without compromising the intent of this policy, comma, if a student requests, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. To think about that for a second.
Okay, so now we need to decide whether or not to move this forward, and so I'm going to have you state yes or no into the mic.
So Jamie Lynn said she had to think about it in a minute, so are you still thinking about whether that language is sufficient for you or not? Because first, we need a consensus on the change, and then we need the next piece, I think.
Well, we do have one more meeting before this, so maybe I can get some more clarification there.
Well, we're discussing that modification, without violating the intent of this policy, and it's talking then about reasonable accommodation, and we've covered a couple of different areas already of those potential reasonable accommodations.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
I will assert, as counsel, that if there is a, this is non-material in terms of change, I mean, in terms of vast significance, and so if there is a final red line at your next meeting, I would approve you to be able to take a final vote, even if you made another verbiage change at that point on this topic.
Okay, so if you could just state yes or no into the microphone.
Still not comfortable with other reasonable option, but if we have time to do some changes and some discussions, because I was not at the executive session last night, so I think I've missed some information possibly, so, yes.
Director Heil?
No.
Director Livia Wright?
No.
Director DiVola?
Yes.
And I will be a yes, so that will be moved forward for the next meeting.
I thought we were taking consensus on the change first.
No, actually, didn't Brad just say that we have time with discussion to make other red line changes? If we have that discussion, or do you want to finish that discussion?
I perceived your consensus to be that we're moving it forward with the proposed change in place, and if at the last minute you have a revision, we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Got it. I understand now.
Okay, and I don't think we have any more public comment. Are there any miscellaneous items? We are adjourned at 9:13 PM.